So it's five forty-six, we'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Cook?
Yes, Dr. McBride?
Here.
Mr. Perez? Mrs. Steffi? Mr. Kizbeth?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Item number two, adopt the agenda. I can have a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'm moved.
Mr. Cook?
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mrs. Steffi?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
All right, they're moving to item number three, board discussion. Under the heading today, we have district finance listed. Do we need to motion to enter into this? I don't remember.
Nope.
Okay, all right.
Sorry, you're good. Well, I guess I'll start us off then with this. Obviously, we keep talking more and more about our district finances. And I don't think that's a bad conversation. It's a great way to be able to educate our community about where we are with our district's finances right now. I think as the board is well aware and we work to keep educating people in our community, we are in some tenuous probably times. We definitely have some hurdles in front of us that are going to be significant. I think that we can clear all of them. But it's going to take us working together and being decisive and making some actions. And some of those actions are not going to be pleasant if we're being blunt. So as we keep saying, and I've said a number of times, and it's been quoted at a few different places, we can't cut our way out of this problem, nor can we tax our way out of this issue. It's going to have to be a bit of a combination thereof. Schools, yet again, this is mostly as an education piece. We are now recording this special work session so that people can hear. We've had some really great, robust conversations during these work sessions where we do a lot of education within ourselves about topics that are in schools. And so now to be able to take those same conversations and make those available to members of our community, I think is helpful. Yet again, I know the board is firmly aware of this. But for people that do watch at home, schools, almost by nature, will invariably get to a position where we will look to have to deficit spend. Definition of deficit spending is we are spending more money than we're bringing in. Due to House Bill nine twenty, that was passed in nineteen seventy-six, that's what almost all schools have to do. So, once we are projected to begin deficit spending, we have to be able to take some actions, whether that's begin making some reductions early, whether that's going to our voters for assistance, or some combination thereof. I believe that this has been projected since about twenty sixteen?
Yeah, it was the twenty sixteen.
Fifteen or sixteen.
Fifteen sixteen, so. It was the twenty sixteen fiscal year.
Yeah. It would have been two thousand fifteen likely then, yeah.
Okay.
So that's why I always get that date kind of messed up.
Yeah.
So I think just as we're looking at some of these things, we've had this situation staring at us, and it's too easy to sit there and go, well, later we'll deal with that some other time. And we kicked the can down the road. We're at that some other time now. So we don't have a ton of time and a ton of flexibility to maneuver around to make some of these decisions. So I think one of the things that we have to take a look at is that a healthy balance of, what do we talk about as far as making reductions? How do we make those reductions at targeted level, you know, a targeted dollar figure, things of that nature? What is it that we're going to have to ask our community for help and support on? If we do ask for help and support, what does that look like? One, in terms of dollar amounts, what does that dollar amount look like? And then what is the way to structure that? There's, the term of that is up for a conversation. You can sit there, that could be a permanent, that can be an emergency, there's a lot of different ways. And then we can sit there and go, there's really two predominant ways to go to our community. We can go for property tax and income tax. Within it, and I'm always going to look over at Mr. Cook just every so often, just to make sure I'm not saying anything that's incorrect. And if he is, Mr. Cook, by all means, jump in and-
Or I'll hook you.
Jump, jump, jump in and-
I will.
And say, no, 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 you're wrong on that. Because this is his lane a lot more. But there's two types of income tax. There's a traditional income tax, and then there's earned income tax. Once a school district has one of those two, you can't easily switch it to the other.
Correct.
You can't mix and match them. You can't have a traditional and an earned at the same time. You can have one or the other. Currently, at Tiffin City Schools, we do not have any income tax.
Correct.
The city of Tiffin has an income tax, which is at two percent right now. So I think those are all conversations that, for us to kind of keep having some more conversations, again, for people that are potentially going to watch this from the public, we've been having a number of these conversations, especially at the beginning of board meetings during these work sessions. But yet again, I think we've recognized that we had some really great conversations and some educational pieces that we would like to be able to have other people be able to listen to and pay attention to as we move forward. So yet again, that's kind of a quick encapsulation. As we talk about fiscal issues, there's the desire, and I get with people to go, well, what happened all of a sudden? How did we suddenly end up here? That's a common phenomenon for anybody in schools to talk about. But the reality is when you go back and look at the five-year forecast, for a while, this isn't new. And so this is where we are. So I think just continuing to have those conversations around all of those different talking points, you know, through cuts, to help with our reductions, through going to our voters to ask for support, for operating funds, what do those look like, and what balance points? Because there's not a, I don't think we can do all of one or all the other. It's got to be some sort of, I'm not sure there is such a thing as a happy medium, because there's always going to be people that think that that balance should be different than what it is. But for us collectively, as five people that are represented by our community, what do you guys think is that sweet spot, for lack of a better phrase?
So, just kind of summarize where we are. We've got a hundred percent of our tax revenue comes from property taxes, right?
Correct.
And-
Local tax.
Local, yeah. So, but of our revenue as a district, there's a split between what we get from the state and what we get from our taxes. It's about fifty-fifty?
Pretty close.
Yeah, we're pretty close. For the sake of discussion.
For the sake of argument tonight, run with it.
Yeah, so just fifty percent just comes from the state from what they budget, and then the other half comes from property taxes. And of our expenses, if I remember, we're at about seventy-five percent on the salary and benefits?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, I'm at the point for the board, maybe we don't do it tonight, maybe we do. I have all of our updated values from the auditor reflecting the huge increase we saw in Seneca County. So as we want to start to what if, I can do income tax, I can do various millage levels with the levy. Since I hit the door in August, it's been, okay, bond issue and property tax, operating at some point. It sounds like now we've kind of got cuts in the mix. We've thrown out, can we cut our way out of it? Roughly thirty-eight million dollar operating budget, let's say four million would be twelve percent. I mean, it's feasible, it's painful, I can show you what that looks like. I think that calculus could be interesting with attrition. I think we can get close. I mean, Ben's talked about a million for next year. But what I want to be careful of is that million's not really a million in cuts, because we've got eight hundred thousand in S R going back. So it's really only two hundred thousand net-net. So I think if, and again, we haven't spent a lot of time on this together, but I think that the figure there, I told Ben the other day in our meeting, if the levy would fail, I need two million. And I think I was looking at that in terms of two chunks of two million. I think four million's our number, it gets us there. And I can update it and show you, but it was a whale of a cash balance in the bank. That's no operating money needed, which might change the calculus then perhaps on the bond issue. So we can run that. Again, it's an estimate, it's a what-if, it's based on what we know today, based on the figures we have in here with staffing and what we're spending. So we can really start to drill down on where we're at and where we want to be. And I think for me, it's helpful to know where the board is. What options do you want to see modeled? And I'm willing to sit down individually, I mean, we can go through this till the cows come home and plug in, one percent earned, one percent unearned, various levies at various years of passage, as well as cuts. And what does that then do to the forecast? I can flip right over and show you. So I guess that's where I need to know, where does the board want to go? Because when I got here, it was right, it was bond issue and operating levy. Cuts just weren't something that was mentioned to me.
I mean, just from my perspective, right? I think we need to talk about facilities, but if we can't keep the doors open, it's irrelevant.
Correct.
Right? All the operating money in the world isn't going to help us? I'm sorry, all the facilities there, you know, would be bright and shiny and new and fun? If we can't run the buses to get the kids there, what's the point? So I think the first problem we need to solve is just making sure we stay viable as a district. And the other is nice on top, but the other problem we have to solve.
I think it's brutal, because I think that we're going to have to keep spending money on repairs for buildings that aren't necessarily viable. We know that data, we know those dollars and cents, and they don't make a ton of sense. And so it is understandable that we have tried to look at buildings, that we have recognized that that is at a dire point. But the more dire point is operating. So that has to be a priority. And it sounds like, Mr. Cook, if I heard you correctly, with no operating levy pass, you need four million dollars from somewhere.
Think that'd be ideal. So I just plugged in two million in cuts with S R, so it's a net one point two, let's say for next year, which means he's moving this spring to figure it out, taking every dollar of attrition we can get. We still have a deficit spend every year, but our cash balance at the end, we swing from roughly six million negative to five million positive, gives us fifty-one days of unencumbered true cash. So you can see just what that cuts. It kicks it out enough, it gives the board time, so that, the thing I want to find you is time, so that we're not rushing in. The worst thing we can do in business is make a rush decision. I can guarantee you it's probably the wrong one. So cuts by time, I mean, that's an eleven million dollar swing, right there roughly on our cash balance. Again, no operating levy next year whatsoever. I don't know anybody that likes taxes, I don't love them. So if we can avoid that, do I think we'll have a lot of attrition? Education has for the last couple of years. I mean, as I've done some pencil sketching with Jerry and with Ben, I can get to a million pretty quick.
Right.
A question.
Sure.
I believe I know the answer, but I'm going to write it down anyways. Let's say we do nothing, we sit on this. In all fairness, this is not a new problem, this has been forecasted, Sharon forecasted this for years. Let's say we continue to do that, and we don't pass an operating levy, and we make no cuts.
Correct.
Then what?
So if we do nothing, our forecast has changed a little bit because of the increase in taxes we got with the twenty mil floor. I don't want to get into that discussion yet here tonight. We're negative six million in F Y twenty-eight, actual cash.
We were previously like negative six point eight million, right?
Yeah, that's about, correct. Couple hundred thousand dollars, we got about five hundred thousand dollars more a year. Our state funding's getting cut, fifty thousand next year, so that's two fifty off that, we're there.
Okay.
So it's an improvement, but not near enough to make a hell of a difference.
It doesn't move us out all fiscal year.
No, not at all.
It doesn't move us out an entire fiscal year.
It does not move us out an entire year, no. It buys us a few days.
Correct. Yeah, it doesn't change the calculus. F Y twenty-eight, when kind of D-Day hit with an actual negative cash balance, that has not changed. We either need new money or cuts to factor that.
And the state comes in before we hit that point, right?
Yeah, the state will come in, I would expect, I'll get a phone call, they don't call the soup, unfortunately, they'll call the treasurer. They'll be asking for a plan, I'm guessing, next ball.
So, just to clarify that, correct me if I'm wrong here, their math is based on your current year deficit compared to the previous year's revenue, right?
They're actually going to look at when our cash goes negative, and they're going to see then that-
I mean, to get into the fiscal caution, that's when they would place the phone call, to say, you need to come up with a plan.
They're going to look at the fact that we're two years away from negative cash next year.
Okay, but I mean, I thought I read that the actual calculation was based on, like, if your current year deficit is eight percent of the previous year's-
Yeah, they've got some percentages that, we'll hit it.
We're at seven, we're at seven and a half percent.
Yeah, we're there.
So.
That phone call's coming, but we'll have to avoid that, because what they're basically doing is kind of like Marty McFly knocking me on the head saying, hey, McFly, you got a problem, we need a plan. And that's when then I go to Ben, and I'm like, you gotta give them something, because if not, then commission comes. But I think that's premature, because I think we have some things we can control there, i.e. potential levy or cuts.
But what you're telling me is that doing nothing is not an option?
Yes, I would agree with that assumption. I think we have to do something. We would be fiscally remiss to not address that deficit, because that is only going to continue to increase as the years push out. So that figure of twenty-eight, you know, next year, twenty-nine's going to show up, and, oh gosh, I don't know, I'm not going to guess. It's going to be a horrible number.
Thank you.
Yep.
I remember when we went over this with Mr. Grubbs a while ago, several years ago, we were looking at two million in cuts in the first part of it. I mean, what's the best, and then you were talking about the cares money too as well, what's the best realistic, where do we need to be at?
I'd like to eradicate deficit spend, period. I think that's just a dirty word in my world, but-
I'm going to, we told them where we need to be.
Yeah, we had it two days.
We told them we need to be between sixty and ninety days of cash on hand.
Yeah.
So, we shouldn't be asking that question. We've already told them the answer to that question.
We can get-
Now it's a matter of what do we do to make sure we are at that spot?
Right, but we also told them to come up with a plan. Two million gets us to, I believe, fifty-one days. So we're on the crux there, so that gives you an idea that probably going to need a little bit north of two million. But again, remember, I'm kind of thinking ahead, because I'm going to see F Y twenty-nine drop. And I doubt that our two million in cuts is going to have a material impact on that. But again, I look at it in terms of time. If we can stay off of the ballot, because I think there's a capacity to pay that every community has. And as we face a renewal levy in twenty-seven, we don't want to stack things up and get ourselves in trouble. If we were to go out and pass a big operating levy now and just continue to do business as normal, we've just taken that capacity to pay in the future away. So we're really tying our own hands on what could or could not be available in the future. Not saying there's a right or wrong there, but I think it's, again, a minimum combined revenue with expenses. But the calculus now that's entered with cuts is intriguing to me, because that just hasn't been there before. And we can certainly model that to hit those numbers. I have that, and I can show you again as we go through this in step-by-step, how many days cash does that estimate that we have?
Okay.
Two million gives us a dramatically different picture, dramatically.
And those two million aren't a one-time, that would be-
That follows up through, correct.
Okay.
Yes, yes. I mean, that is two million gone, poof, not coming back.
And that would start in the twenty-twenty-five fiscal year, is that correct?
Yes, I put that in for next year. So it was a net, I think, one point two, the eight hundred thousand in S R that's coming back. Take two million off of that for a net one point two.
Okay.
Then we can look out into that next year.
Okay.
Again, the key here is, and I think Mr. Richards knows this, if that's the route we go, I mean, the board really has to hold his feet to the fire, because if we've got a number that we think we're going to get, and we don't get it, we didn't get it, and we come up short, that could be problematic. We still have a cash balance to work with. Does that help?
Does. So, as a treasurer, you're looking at the numbers as if we can get to two million in cuts, then we can defer when we need to ask for new tax money?
No question in my mind.
Okay. Which then, okay, I won't push that conversation, but-
So, I like where you're going. I like to buy time, extend the life. It's true, everybody's on every three to four years. But again, if we can change the calculus, if our deficit decreases, that next ask is smaller, in theory, as we've cut down, or as I like to say, we've right-sized our district.
Yeah.
One of the options that's out there, I said it to somebody today, I don't know who, I've talked to so many people. The state of Ohio used to offer, I believe they still do what they call a performance audit. I mean, they're going to come in and turn every stone. They're going to look at what I'm paying for group life insurance and say, you can save two cents per employee here. A lot of districts have done this, that's going to be one of the first recommendations from the state when that phone call comes, I can guarantee it. They're going to say, you need to do this. The cost in the past, it's been a number of years since I've done it, was like fifty to sixty thousand, don't panic. Because they say, we're not going to charge you anything if you implement our recommendations, if that makes sense. And I would be stunned if they were to come in here and go through things and say, you're probably familiar with that as well. Here's where you can save some money. Again, I'm not on the academic side, but I think we have to develop a plan. Do we know what our ratios are? Do we know the level of staff? Do we have a plan when we take attrition? Do we say, yeah, it's painful, but again, to me, it's less painful, because they're choosing to leave us. I mean, I look at any time I have to tell him he's got a riff or cut, that's a failure on my end, because I just cost somebody their livelihood. Whereas if they chose to leave us, I think then that's where we can have a hard convo. I get it, the argument's always going to be, we need the position. But at the same time, if that keeps us off the ballot and a lot more fiscally stable, it's an option to explore. I think we can get to a million pretty quick. I'm not, and I haven't spent a lot of time on that either. So when, dive in.
Are you thinking that, so you're saying with attrition, you think we can get to a million pretty quickly?
I think so.
What do you think timeline-wise, you're thinking in twenty-twenty-four or twenty-five?
No, I think we take the attrition this year from spring through summer. And I think we can get to that figure for next year, F Y twenty-five. Attrition's kind of a funny thing, because if we were to say, cut two million, boom, we're doing it. We know we've got it. With attrition, we just don't know who's going to leave necessarily. For example, I think there's some pending retirements. I would take a hard look at that. If we're going down the cut route, again, because those are people that are leaving us. I mean, cuts, nobody wants to go through that, maybe we bounced into it along the way in an employer. They're voluntarily severing employment with us, we should look at that. Does that help?
Yes, I'm just thinking, what is, on some levels, I guess, like, let's say, teachers, what is the trickle-down effect as far as like class size?
That's where you don't want me making that call, because I'm looking at it strictly from the numbers you point.
Which we had had the conversation, let's try to cut first in areas that don't affect the kids.
Correct.
So I'm just thinking, that's the only negative I'm running through my head of attrition is, yeah, if we have a bunch of teachers retiring, great.
Correct.
Saves us money.
But your class sizes.
Yeah, and what if, well, you know, if they're K one, which we're trying to keep small, you know, so-
I've always thought, keep your lower bands low.
Right.
Higher.
But we don't know what that will be.
That's the problem with attrition, we don't.
With attrition, sometimes you're then, somebody leaves, and then you're shuffling people around or rearranging, but licensure has to match.
Yeah.
I have no idea who will leave, who will stay, who can fill what roles. And so even if we're working through attrition, if we don't have someone with the right licensure, we still have to hire.
I don't, not being here last year, I don't know. Traditionally, in education here, as of late, turnover's been extremely high in a number of districts. I couldn't tell you what the frame of reference is here, I just don't know. I would be shocked if it's very materially different from most others, probably pretty high. I think there's an opportunity there, I really do.
I think it's been twelve years.
It's been a long time.
It's time to put a levy on the ballot.
The question is then, what size and what type?
I've always said that we have to put on what we need.
So if we talk about income tax, let's for the minute table earned income versus complete, right? We can go in quarter percent increments, correct?
Yeah.
What is a quarter percent bias?
Bear with me.
I think one mil nets us, property tax nets us a half a million-ish, is that correct?
So, quarter percent earned income tax right now, this is F Y, calendar year twenty-two data from O D T. Year one in F Y twenty-five, approximately fifty thousand. Year two, F Y twenty-six, six hundred ninety-four thousand, and then year three, one point one million. It jumps a little bit in year three, then it levels back off in year four, which is a million six. So let me tell you the impact on that with the forecast. New levy, we would be three point two million in the hole, unreserved fund balance, F Y twenty-eight. So we went from, let's say, six million to three point two.
Okay.
Again, bought some time. It certainly-
That's at the minimum additional income tax, so just the quarter percent. We can only go in quarter percent increments.
Correct.
We're at two percent right now. If we're going to talk about an income tax, I think any income tax in Tiffin that starts with a three is a non-starter.
So if we went with a point seven five, hypothetically, that would bring in an additional three point one million in F Y twenty-eight. Ending cash balance, two point seven million, twenty, sorry, my eyes are bad, twenty-six days, true days cash. So again, positive balance, F Y twenty-eight.
What was that number again?
That we bring in.
Yeah, what would be the cash balance?
Unreserved, two point seven.
Two point seven positive.
Correct.
Not negative six point whatever anymore.
The negative cash balance is gone. We're still in deficit spend, F Y twenty-eight of six million that year. Two point seven, twenty-nine's probably, oh gosh, again, I'm not going to speculate without the numbers, but it's still deficit. It's just much smaller. We've gone from six point three million in F Y twenty-seven to two point seven million in twenty-eight. But again, there's a positive cash balance that buys you some time to work with. So again, if we go back to that combo, if you will.
Yeah.
New revenue, and we make some tweaks with attrition, which is where I think you can have a huge impact at that point in time, not cut anyone. I think, obviously, that figure's going to be huge. So let me just, for the sake of argument, passage.
That is assuming passage.
Correct, correct. But let's run with that assumption for a second.
We'll run with the assumption.
So let me go in here, and let's just say conservatively, let's take out two hundred and fifty thousand in F Y twenty-six of attrition, just going to try to keep it low. Yeah, we didn't kick it out enough, that's not material, one point six. But if you can get seven hundred and fifty thousand to a million each year in attrition, well, over three years, that's another three million to the bottom line. It just depends. If it were me, yeah, new revenue with attrition, cuts, whatever you want to call it. Cuts are going to be, we're making that move versus an employee leaving us. It just drops to the bottom line, on that cash balance.
But if I'm doing my timelines right, that is, there's a gamble, there's a calculated risk in going with levy and attrition, because attrition doesn't guarantee that we have the right amount, and that we don't still have to hire. And we have no guarantee that this will pass-
Correct.
-the community.
Correct.
At which point, we're still looking at four million needed in cuts? Is that the math that I have right?
Well, that came, we had a meeting with Ben and Dan, I don't know what the label Dan has, I'll say a fiscal consultant on the bond issue. That comes from our deficit spend in F Y twenty-six of four point five million.
Four and a half.
Four and a half, yeah. So I think Dan's theory was, let's just take out, you know, four million, five million, which isn't necessarily wrong, but again, that's a whale of a shock to the system on a thirty-eight million dollar budget, whereas that's why I've kind of told Ben from day one, two million minimum. And then, I still remain pretty confident, if our turnover is in fact high, we can get attrition. It's a philosophical tomato-tomato, if that makes sense, because it's not guaranteed. But it could be guaranteed in the sense that the superintendent's told, you're taking every ounce of attrition we can get, and then some. And maybe we have a committee that's the soup, the treasurer, and a board member or two, that if there's a position that comes up, do we need it or not? It's got to be signed off on before it's just brought back and thrown on, if that makes sense. Cuts are guaranteed, attrition isn't, but I'd be shocked if we don't have attrition.
But if we have to reach, let's say, a million, even if we pass a levy, we had discussed that. We have to meet, reach four million if we don't pass a levy. And I still say, I understand where you're coming from with attrition, but that worries me only because I know I had a discussion with someone about a teacher at the high school that's probably retiring.
Right.
That's great, but that position is going to have to be filled based on what it is.
Will still have to.
Because we probably don't have the people to move around-
Correct.
-with that certification. So that just, I mean, that's obviously sounds great, and that's the goal. And that would be really nice if we could get close to where we need to be. I just worry that, you know, the positions that will come-
Cuts are definitive, there's no question.
That people will leave willingly, we don't know what those are going to be, and they may potentially, we may have no choice but to fill them.
It's just a bit of a shift on what we've talked about, which I'm fine with, I have no opposition to that. Then it's a matter of, how much do we want to make?
The heavy part is, is that we have to be able to operate the district.
Oh, yeah.
And attrition or a cut, either way, it's a person.
Hundred percent.
And either way, it potentially affects kids.
Right.
Absolutely.
It's classroom size, which it would be, most likely.
I think that's something I kind of want to stress as we're talking about attrition. I understand the importance of saving as much of our staff as we can, but the kids come first. And I think the mission isn't just to save as many positions here. It's to save the right ones that we need, that best serve our students. It's not who we like or whoever, it's got to be, you know, that's what I want to see. If somebody can't do the job, we just don't want to be putting him in there. But we, as you pointed out, we're not going to save everything by attrition, it's not going to happen. And so, I think that's where we expect our administrators to make those right decisions. And I think you mentioned about, how would that work? Because I think you discussed this before with a committee that any new positions have to get screwed. Cause I think you discussed this before with a committee that any new positions have to get screened before they come in.
I think it's just, it's more an insurance policy for the board. So that, I mean, I hate to say nothing gets promised internally without some sort of, I don't want to say I've seen it, but I've seen it over the years that, okay, great, we're going to do this, wink, wink, nod, nod. And then it's like, I mean, I work for the board, if I catch wind of something that I think smells like three day old fish, I'm going to say timeout, have we looked at this? And then that opens up the door to that discussion, if that makes sense. Um, do you have to? No. But again, I think it depends on the comfort level of the board, where you're at. And if you feel then that, you know, you're laying eyes on those decisions before they either do or don't come to the board, because it could be headed off at the pass, if that makes sense. It's just an option.
So to that point, there's always a balance point between the, I kind of use a right versus left fist. In, in one hand, you're trying to make the best fiscal decision possible. In the other hand, you're trying to balance the best education decision that you can make for kids. And those two don't always inter, intertwine as neatly as we'd like them to. In fact, I think we are, it's pretty safe to say, we are at a place where.
It's an inflection point right now.
Those two will, are probably almost, almost mutually exclusive of one another now.
Agreed.
So when we, when we, if we make a better fiscal decision, it, it's probably going to hurt us on that, on that student performance wise and likewise. You can't talk about one without talking about the other. And so yet again, I go back to, and what is that sweet spot, right? Where, where is that best case? Mr. Cook used the phrase, um, right sizing before.
Yeah.
Uh, we have to, we have to kind of almost reinvent ourselves to say, we may have done all these things in the past and they may have been great things. Uh, they may have been positive things in the past. But what are the things that are the core essential to the experience at Tiffin City Schools for our students? And, and we might have to use the difference between what we'd like to be able to have versus what we need to be able to have. So what are those core principles that are key to having a quality program and a quality experience for our students?
I mean, the last thing I want to do is, is paralyze things. And to me, it's like, if, if we don't do something, that deficit number is going to paralyze us, if that makes sense. I mean, I think everybody agrees with that.
It paralyzes, um, in 2028.
Pretty, pretty quick.
Yeah.
It's, we, we, we pretty much know the date. So I've been lasered in since I got here, like I said, on operating money. I, I don't, I don't have any issue with that. I think again, it's, it's just what does that look like as we go out? Which way are we going to go? And again, it's going to be an emergency levy, which is dollar based. I mean, we can play around with the millage on that or an income tax. We don't want to pull ourselves back up off that 20 mil floor. So we really have two options there. And I think it's a matter of the philosophy the board's going to, for lack of a better word, dictate to us, what do you want to see? Um, because the earliest we're going on is November. So we are going to have a pretty good swipe at attrition this year, for lack of a better word. We've got a unique that it doesn't impact perhaps just positively or not. So Mr. Richards could potentially get a good look at that this year before we're on and we know if we passed or failed. So that could make a difference. Um, you certainly don't want to plan your levy around a figure that doesn't exist. I get that. Um, but I think again, any bonus he gets just drops to the bottom line.
Do we, I know this is going to be part of what you're talking about in the regular board. I mean, we only really have a couple of minutes left here. I'd like to see us have some modeling around something that pushes that bankruptcy date out.
Sure.
A fiscal year or two.
Sure.
Because what we want, what we want to avoid is, is the state helping us solve this problem. Because I don't, I don't think any of us are going to like.
Yeah, I don't want their help. Even though they offered, I don't either. I don't want.
So I think what, what we need is what would be, I think the number that solves our problem perfectly from a taxing perspective is, is a really big number, right? So I think where, where do we need to be?
Sure.
Forget about property versus income, right? We will.
We can back into that.
But where's the number we need to be to kick this out, out of 2028, right? I, I would like for our next five year forecast to not have a negative cash balance. Okay? And we're.
He has to do one in the spring though.
Yeah, the May ones probably.
That's fine. Yeah, that's fine.
You mean next November?
Just letting you know, his next one isn't going to fix that.
Right. So let's do that, because I think that gets us to maybe a minimum amount that we need to, to tax. But combine that with, there, there's risk in relying on attrition.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
So we might have to say we're going to rely on some of that, but we have to force a number.
Yes.
What is the number that gets us maybe backed off of that minimum number a little bit? But has us have some cuts that we are going to have to make?
Point seven five income tax doesn't do it. 1% does, 5.7 million in the bank. And then attrition is just gravy on top of that. Point eight seven five percent is what we need, but with the quarter percent, we just can't do it. So we're up to 1%. 1% will do it. Um, we can do the equivalent in property tax millage if we need to. Um, I can play with that. Yeah. Oh, for sure.
Yeah.
For sure. And then the board can kind of determine the guidance on that. But a 1% income tax does that. And then any little attrition he can take over time certainly bolsters that. And that's 54 days, uh, unencumbered cash balance by 2 in '28.
Okay.
So I think we're there, but we'll keep working on that.
Okay.
Does that help?
I just think we need to keep having more of these conversations. And yet again, it's, it's, it's not just the conversation, it's the education piece. One to make certain that all of us are educated about the facts of the matter. And two, that we can explain to other people in our community, um, the facts of the matter of where we are. So I mean, as we talk about, uh, there's a reason that most superintendents will almost abhor talking about, uh, House Bill 920, uh, because it just makes all of our lives difficult. Yet again, it's been around since 1976. It's not new.
Yeah, I know.
This is not a new phenomenon, uh, but it's something that, that a lot of the public doesn't fully understand. Because they're sitting there going, hey, we're paying more in taxes. So that means the schools are, the schools must be getting rich. Um, which, which isn't really what's happening. Um, and that's because of House Bill 920. If it wasn't for House Bill 920, we'd, we'd feel a lot better right now. About a number of those things.
Couple of board members at a time want to grab coffee, no more than two, want to do lunch. We can sit down and you can have all kinds of fun with a spreadsheet, doing some what ifs, but happy to do that if it would help you.
Dan, if we would go income tax, there is some inflation in that.
Yeah, as wages go, I mean, the inverse of that, true. We're overdue for a recession. I mean, that'll hit and you'll see it drop. I mean, that is actually, the data is there to see it. But yes, in theory, over time with the long view, income taxes typically result in growth. But the inverse is.
Which is a better way of fighting inflation.
Yeah, yeah.
Because House Bill 920 says we're not, we're going to get the same number of dollars.
The key is to live within your means. If that makes sense, um, and, and, and not let it spiral, which we're trying to take action to do. So we'll get there.
Okay. So we have about five minutes to the, uh, regular, uh, regularly scheduled board meeting. Uh, so I think I'll, um, move on to item number four here. Um, so, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn? Any second on that?
Second.
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Mrs. Steffi?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Twenty-four.
So we will reconvene in five minutes. Okay. Uh, we'll go ahead and get started for this evening. Uh, we'll all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number two in the agenda, the call to order. Uh, Mr. Cook?
Yes, Dr. McBride?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
Mrs. Steffi?
Here.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Item number three, adoption of the agenda. A motion to adopt the agenda.
I moved. Second.
Mr. Cook?
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mrs. Steffi?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Wait, that's.
Yeah. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
All right. Okay, moving on to item number four, Mr. Bose, recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. That's always the, uh, best part of, of the quarter is recognizing our excellent staff members that we have here at Tiffin City Schools. Um, so we want to recognize our Crystal Apple Award winners for the second quarter. If we could first have Mrs. Michelle McComas come forward, please. Mrs. McComas. Mrs. McComas was nominated by Charlotte Lineinger. Michelle teaches fourth grade at Noble and I think you've done most of your teaching at Kraut prior to going to Noble. Michelle McComas started working for Tiffin City Schools in August of 1990. She graduated from Heidelberg College in May of 1990 with a Bachelor of Arts in Education and a K-8 teaching license. In December of 97, she added a Master's of Arts in Education from the University of Findlay to her portfolio. Michelle did not stop at that point. Besides taking classes beyond her masters, she became a National Board Certified Teacher through the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards in November of 1999. In the area of teaching, this is what Mrs. Lineinger had to say about Michelle. Michelle McComas develops lessons with students in mind. Her lessons are engaging and challenging. She balances them with teacher-led activities and also time to facilitate and monitor student learning. She incorporates centers in her lesson time so that she is working with small groups and giving individual attention. Michelle knows the teaching standards and follows them. Her students are lucky to participate in many STEAM activities that allow them to create and tap into their natural skills. Many times these activities challenge their problem solving and teaches them teamwork and collaboration. Because teaching involves more than just lesson plans, it's important to note that Michelle participates and attends many school-related activities at Noble. In addition, she has a great relationship with the local universities and has taken on the responsibility to help future educators as a cooperating teacher. She has taken classes in STEAM and brought those lessons into the classroom as well. In the area of commitment, Mrs. Liner says Michelle is committed to student achievement, development and accountability. Her commitment to our profession is unmatched. Often giving up additional personal time to develop lesson plans that are engaging and support all students' learning styles. She embraces new curriculum and district policy and gives it her full attention to learn on her own. Michelle is committed to student moral development and encourages students to be Noble proud and pack students in and out of school. She listens to students' concerns and helps them self-advocate and problem solve. In the air of leadership, Michelle is a quiet person who leads by example. I bet you're just loving this, aren't you? She speaks when it's needed. She often thinks she isn't meeting goals, but in actuality is setting the bar high for others in the building. She has taken student success and made it fun and rewardable. She has developed reward systems for AR goals, IXL goals, PAX points, and other teachers have modeled her ideas. In the era of being student centered, Michelle is student centered. Her lesson plans, student seating, balance of. In the area of being student-centered, Michelle is student-centered. Her lesson plans, student seating, balance of independent slash group work, and brain breaks are all centered around student needs. She continuously seeks out ways she can mix up her lessons to meet student needs. She does what is best for students' learning, both the curriculum and the molding of their little minds and character. Congratulations, Michelle, for being selected as our second quarter Crystal Apple Award. Thanks for all you do, and thank you for choosing TCS.
Okay. Thank you. I am honored to receive this award. However, I would not be the teacher that I am without the support of my family, administrators, colleagues, and mentors. I also need to thank the roughly 700 students and families that I've had the privilege to work with and learn from. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Mrs. Heather Steinhouser from Lincoln Pre-K. Heather, come forward, please. Heather was nominated by pre-k teacher Brianna Clark. Heather Steinhouser has been an educational aide for Tiffin City Schools since 2014. She has served in several different aide positions, including lunch and playground aide, classroom aide, and a one-on-one aide in the low-incidence classroom. She has worked at Washington K1 and Kraut 23. In 2017, Heather took her test to become a paraprofessional and began her assignment at Lincoln Pre-K. In the area of teamwork, this is what Brianna had to say about Mrs. Steinhouser. Heather is always reaching out to others to better herself in the classroom. She is constantly asking for help and offering help to others. She is very inviting and approachable. Everyone at Lincoln feels very comfortable going to Heather for questions, advice, or even just a simple smile. She is sweet and so caring. She always does what is best for kids and works well with other aides and related service providers. She has worked as a classroom aide and as a one-on-one aide. She is always asking what she can do to help out. In the area of commitment, Brianna says Heather is extremely dedicated to kids and her work. She has an impressive work ethic, often showing up to work early and staying late whenever needed. Recently, the classroom teacher was out of the class for maternity leave. Heather took over several extra responsibilities and has kept the teacher updated with how things were going, so when she came back, the teacher knew where the students were at, where the students were at in their learning. She worked tirelessly so that the kids stayed on track and gained new skills. Heather, on her own, decided to stay well past her contracted hours to maintain organization and other demands in the classroom in order to help the students' substitute teacher and the regular teacher upon her return. In the area of leadership, Heather has always been a leader and someone that you can rely on. Other aides in the building often come to her for help. I have worked with Heather for three years now, and she has always helped the additional aide in the classroom. She takes charge and shows them how to do things and isn't afraid to jump in and take over instruction when I need to assist in behavior management. She has worked with two different aides since being with me and has always worked hard to make them feel comfortable and welcome in our classroom. In the area of taking pride in her work, this is an area that Heather requires some extra encouragement in. She is the first person to get up and offer help and compliment others, but doesn't always give herself enough credit for just how much work and love she puts into things. She is so passionate about helping others, especially kids. Her eyes light up when kids draw her pictures. Stop it. You're gonna make me cry. Her eyes light up when kids draw her pictures or when they run to her for hugs in the morning. So many kids love her hugs and her welcoming smile positivity. Heather shows her pride in her work by putting so much work and passion into her position. She has become an outstanding educational aide at Lincoln Pre-K. Other accomplishments and supportive material, many, many people compliment Heather and her work ethic. Her passion shines bright when she works with kids. She is a wonderful human and advocates for kids, truly an amazing aide who deserves this and many other awards for how hard she works. Congratulations, Heather, for being selected as our second quarter Crystal Apple Award winner. Thank you for all you do, and thank you for choosing TCS. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Bose. We have an item on the agenda, item number five. Mr. Richards, are we proceeding with item number five?
We are going to be removing that from today. There's just a few other things that we need to clean up, I think, before we bring this back before the board, just to have some more conversations about. It's not that we are not moving forward with this, wanting to have this conversation. I think there's just a few other things that we need to do at this time prior to bringing it for a board discussion. So just a few things that we just need to clean up a little.
Okay, very good. So moving on to item number six, superintendent's reports and recommendations.
Okay. No, that's, that was for presentation. Wait. You were saying for number five? Yes. No, that's number six on this one that we're looking at.
Number five was the ELA curriculum?
Yeah.
Number six is the superintendent reports?
So, okay. Okay. Oh, there we go. All right. So I put this in black and white. That's my normal mode of operation anyway. I'm not a visually aesthetic person for a presentation. So just giving an overview, this, this kind of encapsulates a number of the conversations we've had in a lot of the work sessions of where our district is currently located in our fiscal position, but just making certain that we can put this in, in as plain as terms as possible so that people can better understand where we are. Oh, shoot. There we go. So we're, we're leading with the big part first. I don't want to do a, a sales pitch where we build to something and then we give you the punchline at the end. We will be out of money sometime between July 1st, 2026, and June 20th, 2027. If we do nothing, if nothing changes, if nothing, you know, we don't get any breaks to go our way, we don't have additional expenditures that are unforeseen, which is a challenging thing when we have buildings that are aging, that we're not going to have some expenditures that are unforeseen, we will be out of money sometime between June, July 1st of '26 and June 30th of '27. Dang it. Okay. How did we get here? And I'm going to read these out loud. What, starting tomorrow, we will put this presentation on the district webpage so that everybody will be able to see it as well. Sent it out to staff here just a little bit ago. Current year-over-year deficit spending predicted in November 2015. So I think the first important part is, regretfully, we have, regretfully and positively, we have people now talking about our district's finances. Very bluntly, we probably should have been talking about the district's finances for a period of time. Back in 2016, and I'm going to double-check on this, I, I put it on here, Mr. Cook kind of looked it over for me, make sure I'm right. Back in 2016, it was projected, projected that we would be deficit spending at this time. This isn't a new, this isn't a new issue for us here at Tiffin City Schools. This has been known for a period of time. Now, what action has been taken, that's a whole other thing, but this is not a new phenomenon. We got artificial relief during COVID. We had one-time payments that the federal government gave of ESER funds, and that delayed some of the deficit spending, and it delayed it by about two years. But I will tell you, I wasn't at Tiffin City Schools at the time, but we were cautioned over and over and over again. Treasures were cautioned. Superintendents were cautioned. They're like, be very, very careful with ESER funds because it's going to make everything feel better for a minute. But the phrase, and there was even something, I think, in a national publication talking about, the fiscal cliff is coming for schools. So this was, this wasn't new. This wasn't unexpected. And yet again, we haven't had, and no, we haven't had new local taxpayer money for over 12 years. Again, in the state of Ohio, the average for that is about three to four years. That's average in the state of Ohio. So we've been over 12 years without any new funds. I will also reiterate, because I've said this a gazillion times, and I will keep saying it, there are only 16 districts in the entire state of Ohio that have a smaller per pupil expenditure than Tiffin City Schools. That puts us in the bottom 3% of all schools in the state of Ohio. If people are wondering, how do you calculate per pupil, total per pupil expenditure, you take all of the money that is collected, divided by the number of students we have, and that's our per pupil expenditure. It's a pretty, it's a pretty solid metric. I will say this over and over, I love stats. You cannot say, it would be inappropriate to say that spending more money guarantees student performance. That's not true. If that was the case, and I won't call any of the school districts out, there would be some school districts that are, some would be some of the top-performing school districts in the state of Ohio. Instead, they're some of the lowest-performing districts. But I think we are a safe enough place in the bottom 3%. I feel fairly safe in saying that money probably wouldn't hurt our situation when it comes to outcomes. Yet again, you cannot say spending more money guarantees student performance. That is not a true statement. The single greatest predictor of the success of a student has been for about the past 50 years, and I don't anticipate it changing anytime soon, is the quality of the classroom teacher. Number one with a bullet every single time. So how big is the deficit? Deficit spending is defined by, we are spending more money than we bring in. As we talked about during the work session, that is not an uncommon place for schools to eventually project to be. Why? Because we really don't have the method of, of accounting for inflationary costs. So deficit spending by itself is not necessarily a scary thing. What is scary is that we have to have a plan for how we are addressing that deficit spending. Yes.
Yes. I've sat in the corner over there, and so can you make sure you read every word?
Okay, I'll read that.
I know they can't see it.
Yeah, that's, I, good point. So our, our current actual deficit spending in 2023 is 1.5 million, and we have a, leaving with a cash balance of 15.5 million. In 2024, that is now, we were projected to have a deficit spend of 2.2 million, which would leave us at the end of the year, and that would be this year at 13.7. In 2025, we would be deficit spending 3.3 million, which drops our cash balance to 10.4. In fiscal year 2026, it's at 4.5 million, which gives us a cash balance of 5.9. And in 2027, that's 5.7 million that we would be deficit spending. So you're seeing, we're, we're increasing about 1.1, 1.2 million every year of deficit spending. But it, it compounds. I'm an English teacher by trade, but math, it, it compounds over a period of time. So we sit there right now with a $15.5 million cash balance, and I will tell you, there's a lot of schools that would sit there and go, that, that sounds really nice to be able to have a $15.5 million cash balance. But the reality is, when we are deficit spending, you can see that that cash balance keeps dropping down faster and faster. Forecasting is 5.7, which gives us a cash balance of 200,000, which I will tell you is actually a major trigger because 200,000, while we would hope to manage that budget to make it more positive, all it takes is one or two things to kind of break against us, and now all of a sudden, we have a problem. And in 2028, fiscal year 2028, deficit spend of 7 million, and we would be a negative cash balance of negative 6.8 million. Negative 6.8. Yes, Mr. Perez?
To clarify, though, you don't see the permanent improvement fund on there, right?
Correct.
And so I think some of the public gets confused because they see like the track or some repairs, and they're like, well, that's, that's a separate pot of money that can't be used for this, correct?
Correct. So the permanent improvement funds are, can be spent for things that are going to have a, a useful life of five years or more. So typically, actually, we're in a building that we put a new, new roof on last, this past summer. That is projected to last more than five years, so we can use the permanent improvement money for that. So the, the easy way of saying this, Mr. Perez, is you can use general fund money for permanent improvements, but you can't have it go the opposite direction. You really can't use permanent improvement funds for general fund expenses, if that makes sense. Mr. Cook, am I doing okay?
You're good. You don't need me.
All right, just making sure. It's always nervous to be around a treasurer because he can always correct me when I'm wrong. So how do we solve this plan? Execute a plan to increase revenue and reduce expenses. I've said this a gazillion times, we can't cut our way out, or we can't tax our way out. We've got to be able to do both. An, an ask for the community, and we'll get to that in a second, is just not realistic, nor can we cut our way out, and that'll be, that'll be very clear here in just a few seconds. So revenue, most revenue is property tax, and that does not inflate with expenses. That's what we discussed here in the work session before. I think Mr. Perez or Ms. Kizbeth, one of you, kind of brought that up. We would need to pass an operating levy in the fall of '24 or the spring of '25. Superintendent speak. The earlier we can start solving problems, the better, the, the more we kick it down the curve. That usually, that helps us a little bit, but can cost us in the end. That would require between 12 to 14 mils to fully address all of our issues. Yet again, millage is not million dollars. That's a property tax term. So it'd require 12 to 14 mils. If anybody's curious, you take your total assessed value of your house, and one mil equals $35 per assessed, per $100,000 of assessed valuation. So that's, if anybody's wanting to do the math on their own, look up your property values, not what the appraised property value is, what is the assessed value? Expenses, most expenses are salary and benefits. We're a school. We deal with people. And as such, we've got about 75 to 85% of all of our costs are with people. So if we have to make reductions, if there are other things like that, that's going to be people. So without new money, we would need to make about 3 to 5 million dollars in cuts in fiscal year '25. The best guess is that probably equates to about 30 to 40 positions. And the reason I put positions on there, it's, it's easy to talk about dollar figures as dollar figures. From my seat, dollar figures are also people, though, as well. And so we can't sit there and, and, and sit in this ivory tower where we're not talking about that these, these conversations are, are talking about people's lives. They're talking about people's livelihoods. So I, I just want to, I think we need to humanize that number. 30 to 40 positions is significant. So even with new money, we would still need to make cuts. We cannot go 10-plus years without getting additional monies. That's why we're in this position. What happens if we don't act? And yet again, I don't want to, I don't want to create fear and panic. That's not what we want to do. The, the goal of this presentation is just to be honest with people. If people say, well, what happens if we don't do this? I, I think we don't want people to sit there and come into a situation where something, something bad happens, and then people say, well, we didn't even know that that was a possibility. So it's just making sure we educate people. Ohio law does not allow schools to operate without, without cash on hand. We're not the federal government. We can't run into, into the, into the red. Without action, we could expect the takeover, the, the state to take over the districts, our, our district's financial picture sometime in 2026. There are three stages of state intervention: fiscal caution, development of a plan, and as Mr. Cook stated at the special meeting here earlier, we're anticipating probably in a few months, Mr. Cook, getting a phone call from the state.
Probably the fall.
Probably the fall. So, and what we have to do is then fiscal watch, execution of the plan. Part of that's going to be, we're trying to make this amount of cut in reductions, whether that be through attrition, the cuts, whatever, and we're going to be going to our voters for X amount to help address whatever isn't done. If the plan fails, the state takes control of the district, takes control, financial control of the district. If the plan fails, the state takes control of the district, takes control, financial control of the district, which means all decisions are made strictly for financial reasons, nothing about what we think is best for kids. Basically, they start with what is legally required? What is the minimum? And they build from that point. So I will say, you can go online and you can look at the schools that have had fiscal emergency. There are currently no schools that are under fiscal emergency in the state of Ohio. The last school that was on there, I think was around 2018. And it makes sense that there's no schools on there now. Esser, if there was any school that was looking at it, Esser would have helped that situation now. So that's what happens is if the state comes over, yet again, I'm not saying this to scare or intimidate people. I think we just need to make sure we're honest about if, if we don't resolve these issues, what, what's coming? What are we going to be facing? So what does this mean in the short term? To help stem the impending forecast, we need to probably target about $1 million worth of reductions. My goal, and I've said this for a while now, is hopefully to try to do that through attrition and a few other savings. We can meet this target without anyone losing employment in the district. That is the goal. That's the best way for us to be able to make those cuts. That's the most, if I say humane way, that when we care about people, that's the way that we really want to be able to try to target that. What does this mean in the long term? If we secure additional revenue in November, we would most likely still need to make some additional reductions through attrition. Mr. Cook kind of articulated that a little bit during the special board meeting, that attrition is really the way to go. Yet again, we can't pinpoint a number when we have that, because we never know how, how that's going to work. But doing, making budget cuts through attrition i- is really the preferred way of having to deal with any type of budget cut. Without additional revenue from a ballot initiative in November of '24, we would face, yet again, approximately 3 to 5 million in cuts during the spring of '25. That translates to approximately 30 to 40 positions. If we were successful in the spring of '25 with the same amount that we would have asked for, and if we went on the ballot of November of '24 and we were unsuccessful. Let's say we were on the ballot in November of '24 for X amount of dollars. If we turned around in spring of '25 and we passed that same X amount of dollars, we would still have to make cuts, probably not 3 to 5 million worth, but we'd have to make cuts because we would have to wait an additional calendar year for the collections to begin. So going in November gives us the opportunity to start addressing it a little bit more quickly and start the collection process a little bit more quickly. And as I've kind of indicated, if we are unsuccessful in securing additional funds through November of '25, most likely the state would take over our school district sometime in '26. So that is the end of that presentation. I mean, I'm, I'm putting this in black and white because I want people to see it in black and white where we are. It is not a new phenomenon, and I want to reiterate that. So I'm going to read just a little thing. And apparently, as I get older, I can't use my glasses to read. So this would be the rundown from my perspective of the impacts of things that have been overlooked or ignored for about a decade. Updating board policies to stay current with legal cases and trends. Creating and articulating a plan to address our financial situation. Addressing a master plan for our buildings. Fixing known facility issues around the district, middle school HVAC and AC joints, which I only put up because I know some people may have been very happy about the fog delay that we had on Friday. And, and fog was, was part of the reason for it. But if I'm honest, one of the biggest problems that we had, and special thanks to maintenance and actually our IT department. No one would think that the IT department would be involved in a maintenance fix. But, but right where we are sitting in right now was a completely unusable space on Friday. It was raining inside the middle school. We had, we had water, there was water up on the stage, which is a wood floor. We had water over by some of our sound equipment over there, which luckily it's still working, so good job, Hunter. We had water leaking in the building. Part of the high school didn't have heat that day, and Crowd Elementary didn't have internet. Why? Because we lost power on two occasions Thursday night into Friday. So we lost power. So I will say this, if it wasn't for all of those other things, not maybe a popular thing, we would have probably had school. It would have been delayed, but we would have had school on, on Friday. Yes, sir?
Can you clarify, because you just said we fixed the roof here, replaced it?
Oh, so the, I'm sorry, the, the leaking that we had was not from the roof. The leaking that we have is that we have to run the boilers in this building 365 days a year. Why? Because we have to heat the water so that it doesn't condensate from faulty joints that are in the building. And so when we lost power, the boilers went out, which means we weren't able to heat the water. So it was actually, it wasn't leaking through the roof. Thank you, Mr. Perez. It was not leaking from the roof. We didn't have rain that night. It was inside the building. It was self-created rain. So we had to wait and technology had to be involved, because technology had to work with the computer system to send a signal to the boilers to be able to turn on, to be able to heat the building. And yet again, I can't thank, I mean, if you look around right now, you walk around this building, I mean, even the ceiling tiles, the custodian, the custodial and maintenance departments have done a phenomenal job. For some of you, you can probably look around here, and it doesn't look like there was anything wrong on Friday. That is a testament to the job that they've done. But I'm going to tell you, that was part of the reason we didn't have school on Friday, is because this building was not suitable for school on Friday. That has nothing to do with teachers or anything. That has to do with the fact that we've had this issue for, this issue's been around for a while. Now, what I was told by the custodial staff is this was the worst it's been, but that we've had this issue a little bit in times in the past where we'd get little leaks. We didn't have enough trash cans to put underneath the leaks in this building. That's unacceptable. May get back to it? Oh dang it. Fixing known facility issues around the district. Creating a cogent hiring, evaluation, dismissal process with proper protocols and compliance with applicable laws and guidelines. Investing in aligned curricular materials. Setting goals and expectations for our districts and buildings based upon measurable goals. Lack of funds towards compensating all staff at competitive levels. Lack of updating technology infrastructure. Outdated safety procedures and lack of reporting systems. And lack of unified progressive discipline structure with accountability. So what I will say is, I understand when people express frustration, it is justified. Friday was probably about as upset as I've been since I've been at Tiffin City Schools, because I think it is absolutely ridiculous that we weren't able to have school because of an issue that we've known about for over 10 years and we haven't addressed. Yet again, it is in the process of being addressed. Special thanks to Mr. DeVore and his crew. The earliest, it takes a few days for them to do this work. So that means we have to shut down the building, so they've scheduled it over spring break. Unfortunately for us, spring break was just a little bit too far away before we ran into this issue. So I, I can't thank, we have people here doing great work, and I don't want this presentation to be all doom and gloom either. We have some truly wonderful things here at Tiffin City Schools that we can be proud of. But if we don't fix some of these kind of key areas in our, in our district's financial picture being one of those largest ones, then we can't afford to do any of the things that are good for kids. Yet again, this is not a new problem. And I, I just can't stress that enough. This has been projected as far back as 2015, 2016, somewhere around there. It is our responsibility as superintendent, treasurer, and board of education to ultimately rectify this. And I don't believe kicking the can down the road is viable for us. We have too many people that have worked too hard. We have too many people that have worked too hard to do, do good things for kids. And very bluntly, our kids don't deserve that. Our kids deserve to have school buildings where we can have school and we don't have to worry about them tripping on water that's spilling out. That corner over there, and, and Mr. Kispeth, I appreciate you being on support services, and Mr. Kispeth came over Friday morning just to see it as well. That corner right over there, Mr. Kispeth, right as the entrance, as you're coming into the cafeteria, you, you couldn't get through. And we had about, I don't know, four big trash cans, and they were, I mean, water was just pouring down. Yeah. So it-
You can see the damage. Oh, I wasn't on. You can see the damage on the floor by those doors of an ongoing problem.
Yeah. I mean, and we just have to look around. There's, and I'm, I'm not trying to highlight all of our, our dirty laundry, but I think part of the first step in fixing any problem is acknowledging that we do have some problems that have to be fixed. All of those things I read, we're not going to fix all of those overnight. I think we've said a number of times, we didn't get to this point overnight. We're not going to get out of it overnight. But we have to start taking meaningful steps to dig our way out of this. And that's going to be uncomfortable from time to time. And that's not going to be pleasant as we have to deal with those things. So I, I will pause for a second to open that up to discussion. I know I just talked about that, but if anybody wanted to chime in, address anything else, correct anything else that I've said, you're welcome to do so. Yes, Mr. Perez?
I would ask, our treasurer, you provided us with an update during the, the work session. And can you provide your expertise in this area, your financial person here?
Thank you. I, I think I said it earlier on the, the hangout Mr. Richards has, don't panic. We have time. The first step, we have to come up with a plan. We have to determine which route we're going to go, what holes we're going to plug, and, and move forward judiciously on that. There's no secret, we've got deficit spend. Mrs. Perry's forecast had that in there for years. Evidently, it's ramped up in importance here as of late, which isn't necessarily a bad thing, but here we are. The board's working diligently to try to come up with a plan. I don't have any answers for you here tonight. I've got some numbers and some ideas and some thoughts. And we're continuing to navigate down through that road to come up with what's the best mix of things to hopefully make us successful and continue to educate kids. I said it earlier, again, don't panic. We have to educate students regardless of what happens in here. Tomorrow, kids are going to come in and expect to be educated. I'm a strong believer in planning. No, we don't have one right now, but we're going to get there. Again, it didn't get here overnight. I have opinions on various numbers and facts and figures. I think we all have that, and we've had some great discussion on that here tonight. We'll get there. There's work to be done. It's a combination of revenue, reduction in expenses that I think will get us across the finish line. But again, we, we just need some more time to get there. Got here in August. My numbers are no different than Sharon's. I feel comfortable where we're at. Again, I can't reiterate enough, I, I, I don't want to see us panic over where we're at because of finances. I'm certainly not panicked. We have time, and I think that's on our side right now to come up with a plan, develop a plan, and then implement the doggone thing. So we'll get there.
President, a question for you. I think that earlier on, we discussed in the work session, can you hear me now? Yeah, I think we discussed in the work session, the, we, Mr. Kispeth and I are in the superintendent's committee on facilities planning. And I did read your email earlier today. I, I think that has to be clarified by the board, what our priorities are in terms of that planning. I think some, the public may be confused as to, you know, is that your ultimate goal here, the buildings? Or is it this? And I think we need to clarify that it's this. That, you know, we, we have the facilities planned because we have to, but I think that this is the priority of the board or-
Oh, so you're asking me to kind of repeat what I said earlier?
Yeah.
So, okay, so, boy, I'll have to recall what I said. It was somewhere along the lines of, you know, if, if we don't solve the operating problem, all the pretty buildings in the world don't matter, right? They'll be empty, right? It wasn't quite as colorful as that, but it was along those lines, right? We've got to solve our operating problem first. And then we'll have the luxury to solve the, the facilities problem, right? I know we have a lot of teachers and staff here, right? And you, I think, all know about all the problems in all the buildings, right? Class, classroom sizes, we got copiers in hallways, right? The, the list is long. But all of those problems are, are almost secondary to if we can't get the operating money, the copier's going to be in the hallway and no one's going to be using it because we won't be here anyway. So that, it was my preference to first focus on the operating. And then if we have the luxury of being able to ask for more money to solve all of the facilities problems, whether that's a new building or seriously repurposing it, that's, that's not the important question here. But the operating has to be followed by the facilities.
Yeah, and I, I think as treasurer, I mean, Mr. Richards and I had, I think it's fair to say, a pretty healthy discussion. I came down on the side very bluntly, facilities got to wait. We got to shore up operating to your point.
And that's, and I agree with that. I think that's where we are right now. The, the need that we have, as we just kind of peel back the, the onion some more, the need is greater and greater. And, and there is a, there is that threshold where we can't place X amount more burden on our taxpayers at one time. There, there's only so much appetite. I don't know of a single person that says I enjoy paying more taxes. I think those are words that have never been said by anybody, but we need to, we, we have to be able to work on those operating costs. We're still going to keep working on coming up with a plan for what is a master plan for dealing with our facilities long-term, because we, we can't stop that work. We knew, we do need to have a plan so that if and when the time is appropriate, that we can say, okay, we already know what the plan is, and now we're going to do this part of it, or this part of it, or the whole thing, to your point. We, we don't know what that is yet, but I think we have to be able to deal with our, with our operating cost right now. Mr. Williams, you're spot on. It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter the quality of the buildings if we don't have quality education taking place in them. Then having beautiful, shiny, brand-new buildings doesn't do anything if, if we don't have a quality product on the inside. So no, that's where I think ultimately, we will have to have this conversation as a board. I don't think we're ready to make any definitive statements, but I think as of this moment, I think we're sitting there going, I'm not cert- I don't, in talking with Mr. Cook, and I think he and I agree, I don't see a viable pathway in the short term to, to deal with facilities. Now, could something change? And if anybody wants to, if anybody wins the Powerball and wants to donate about $100 million to Tiffin City Schools, make check out to Tiffin City Schools, we will, I can't joke about that. Well, I'll name whatever you want after you. Well, I can, the Kispeth High School, I'm fine with it, Mr. Kispeth, that's fine. But you got to play the lottery first, I think, and you got to win. So we, we've got to be, I, I never say never, because you never know what can come down the road. But I would say, at this current station, I just don't see a viable pathway for that. Which, which is disappointing, as Mr. Cook and I have said, I, when I was first hired, people said, we need to address facilities. Let get working on facilities, and we've been doing that work. And I'm super, I'm super grateful for all the people that have engaged in conversation and had honest look about our facilities. I think that's fantastic. But, but first one, then the other. First, we have to get the operating straightened out. I think there was maybe a belief before that we could do both of them for a, a fairly low number. And the, the answer is, we, we can't. And so as we peel back that onion even more, yet again, I, I never say never, but I'm, I just don't see a viable pathway at this point. And, and I know that can be disappointing for people to hear, but I think that's just where we are. Okay. Moving along, so first reading of the Colombian curriculum guide, or the 24, 25 curriculum guide. I believe Mrs. Musgrave is here. Did Mr. Alvarado make it back on time? Nope. He's stuck in a meeting. So this is just the first reading of a curriculum guide. It's got the track changes on there. So obviously, before we would do anything of a final approval, which would hopefully come in March, that would all be cleaned up, look nice and pretty, and all of those things. But Mrs. Musgrave is here to be able to answer any questions that you might have, or if you have comments or suggestions. I feel relatively confident that she would welcome that feedback and make sure to take it back to the appropriate individuals to, to be respectful of that feedback. Does anybody have any comments, questions, concerns, thoughts?
Boy, I'm sure I'm going to say something. I don't think we, we received it in a timely manner-
Okay.
-to be able to review it.
Okay.
And, you know, that's something we need to get cleaned up.
Yes.
Right? Our, our agenda process is still a little rough, right? It's, I'll say it's, it's disappointing. You know, we had to clean up a few agenda items coming into the meeting this evening, and this is one of them, right? I would love to have some feedback. We did not receive it in a timely manner, and we need that cleaned up.
Read them.
So if we- Review them, we'll be happy to provide the information to you if you can afford to the appropriate people, right? So I-
We'll do that.
-think we should still plan to at least attempt to get those reviewed for their approval-
Yes.
-in the March meeting, right? But we have not had time to-
So what, let's just do this. If anybody has any questions or concerns about that curriculum guide, feel free to email me any of those that you see, hopefully in the next week or so, and I'll make sure I afford that to the appropriate- I forward that to the appropriate individual. And so probably safe to say, Mr. Williams, we're going to be talking about the same issue on 6.3 as well with the middle school one. So we'll just get past that as well.
For this to keep on time target, when do you need feedback by?
I'd think probably in the next two weeks, so that way we can take that feedback. Ms. Musgrave and the whole high school team can take that feedback and turn it into a document that then we can provide the final copy to the board in appropriate time so that you can be able to review it.
By March 11th?
Yeah, that's at the latest. Ms. Musgrave, does that sound about right? Two weeks? The feedback? And I'll say like anything else, the earlier, the better. So if you can get it earlier, the earlier we can get that feedback, the faster we can hopefully turn that back around to be able to provide an update for the board.
Thank you. So I think that concludes everything for item number six. Item number seven, of the opportunity for the public to address the board. I think we have quite a few people here today who maybe wish to speak. We do have, according to board policy, we do have 30 minutes allocated. We will try to limit this to three minutes per person. If we do have more than the number of people who can fit into 30 minutes, again, given the number of people here today, I think we will try to make sure we allocate the entire 30 minutes. So if we do need to cut you off at three minutes, we will find the politest way possible to flag you down, and if we do have time remaining, we'll try to get back to you. There is a sign-up sheet on the podium, Kelly, is that correct? Okay, so there's a sign-up sheet there. So as you approach the podium, if you could provide us your name and address, we'd appreciate it. And then also make sure you announce those as you come to the podium. So I think we'll move on to item number seven here, the opportunity for the public to address the board.
I honestly don't even know where to begin, but I'm here for two reasons. One is in support of Mr. Bob Bowes, and the other is for our teachers. Because as of right now, neither one are getting the support that I feel is deserved by the board and the superintendent. And where I'm going with that is in regards to, first of all, Mr. Bowes and the elimination of the assistant superintendent position. I have been part of this district my entire life. My dad, Dick Gower, taught his entire 34 years for this district. And when I got hired in in 2016, he told me, if there is one person in this district that you ever need anything, any questions answered, any problems, any issues, one person you can trust and who will always be honest with you was Bob Bowes. Bob was my dad's principal briefly here at TMS before Dad retired. My dad was a quiet man, but he spoke up when he needed to. And if he was alive today, he would be here wearing red, and I guarantee he'd be speaking because what is happening right now is not fair. And going back to that, for my dad and being at Noble growing up, there has always been a superintendent and assistant superintendent in this district. The need is there. We've always had three to four administrators, even when our highest numbers of enrollment was around 3,000 kids. And for some reason, all of a sudden, we're axing it. All I keep hearing tonight is, we have no plan, we have no plan, we have time, we don't have a plan yet, but we're going to cut $1 million, and we'll start with the assistant superintendent position. While I'm reading the outline of administration, we have chief this, chief that, chief this. And according to one of the board policies, there can't be a new position without a job description and requirements approved by the board. I have yet to see those for those positions, including the one tonight that's on for chief academic officer. So I want to know, if we don't have those, how are we doing evaluations? We're still doing them on our teachers. Are the administrators getting it, the one with the chief position, the chief that? And when you're going through and you were deciding that this was okay to cut, did you question these other positions? Did you question why we're cutting a man's position who has been loyal to this district for 23 years, who has stepped in to put out fires, fill in the superintendent debacles that it keeps happening over and over and over again? And you know who takes most of the blunt? The teachers. They're the front line. And when you go and you do something like this, it's detrimental to the district and to the tone and the pulse of this district. What does that say to our teachers? It doesn't matter how loyal you are, how good you are, what you do for this district. If you need to go, you need to go. Where's the reasoning behind it? And if you don't have a plan, how do you cut? In this whole attrition, you don't have any idea who's leaving. So a high school person leaves, but we have 6K, 3 licensed teachers. Where are they going to go? What are you going to do with them? You can't bank on that money, and I believe that's how it was discussed tonight. You don't know. It's up in the air. And we're cutting positions. How are we cutting positions when we don't have a plan? The comment was just made. Mr. Williams said he didn't like getting things last minute. Can you imagine getting the very last minute unknowns to you coming that your position's being cut? You're not involved. 2003 Denise Callahan, 2009 with Don Colletta. Leadership got together. They came up with a plan. Don Colletta, Scott Urban, and I believe Tom Anway at the time, took pay freezes, no raises, no nothing, because they knew rifts were coming. We've had ways of doing it.
Can I hold you right there? We're at the three minutes, so I just want to make sure that everybody who's here who wants to speak has a chance.
Okay.
So is there anybody else who wishes to speak this evening? I have one more. I have just a couple more, so.
Okay.
Just a few, though, so I think Melanie will let you go. What's that?
If they get in line, we'll know if they're.
That's fine. If we could form a line of some sort, but I want to make sure we don't go over the 30 minutes, but I'd like to let you continue for just a few more minutes, if that's okay?
Yeah, that's fine. I can wrap up. I think my point's coming across pretty strong anyways. Looking at the board policy too, with the positions that we have, the chief positions that we have, the academic officer or the chief of staff that we were supposed to have, whatever it was meant to be. In your board policy, the filed GCPA, you have a reduction administrative staff workforce that if their position's available, that if someone's position gets eliminated, such as Mr. Bowes' position, that there should be another available, hence chief academic officer, chief of staff, chief of whatever's going on. But in your policy says, became, if a position becomes vacant or is created for which the employee is or becomes qualified, qualified is defined as meeting all necessary licensure requirements and being able to immediately and without additional specialized training to perform the duties identified in the job description for the position. So I'm assuming you guys read the job description to determine there was no other administrative position for him that he was qualified for. And that someone who just came into the district was more qualified to take on an administrative position. I know you can't answer me, that's fine. But I want you to think about that. Are we looking at our policies? What are we doing? How is this all being created? I feel like everything's on the fly, and it's kind of, I can do what I want, and you guys are letting it happen. Most of you took a vow, when you came here, you ran, it was because this previous boards we have have been ugly. They have not been transparent. They did what they wanted, and they did it how they wanted to. And that was even closings and delays. They ruled, and that was it, and it didn't matter how anybody else felt. You people have been voted in because we trusted that you were going to change, that you were going to be there. Your goal is to govern the superintendent. And yours, I know financial is important, but so are the kids. And I'll tell you what, if you don't have people in administrative positions like Mr. Bowes, and you don't have teachers like we have sitting here tonight, you don't have a district. Thank you.
Hey, this is tornado power right here. It really is. Look, thanks for allowing me to speak tonight.
Name and address first?
Brian Hall, 848 Lawrence. It's good to be back at my alma mater. Listen, I don't live here anymore. I drove two hours to come here to talk to you guys. You know, and this is amazing, all right? I go to board meetings where I live now, and it doesn't look like this. My name's Brian Hall, class of 1990. You know, I'm a graduate here. I've always supported from afar. I haven't lived here since 1995, but this is what gave me, made me who I am. You're a part of it. So it's important to me to come here and do this. It's my understanding, as we heard tonight, there's some financial issues, whatever. I hear that where I live too. And I live in Wadsworth, Ohio, so that's, it's over by Akron. And I'm here for Bob too. I grew up next to Bob on Old Attic Road. Bob is a Tiffin guy. He's a Clinton Township guy. And even as a kid, me and his brother and him would play basketball in their barn, and me and his brother were getting fights. And Bob was always the one, hey, guys, calm down. Yeah, because his integrity was always high even as eight years old. It's always been that way, always. Like, I wouldn't come back here for just anyone. I came back here because it's important, and I care. I've always come back and done things here. I've given back to Tiffin a lot, in a lot of different ways, and this is just another way. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't miss it. What I don't understand, I understand there's financial issues. What I don't understand is, why you start with the top? Why do you start with the assistant superintendent? Kind of what she said. You have other newly created positions, you have other places to go, lots of places to go. Why do you start with him? You've called the elimination financial and think by offering him a demoted position? Demoted? It is, it is. For the same pay is good enough? The problem is the dishonesty and lack of trust is now created. If financial is truly the reason, if it's truly the reason, then why? Take someone that's been here 23 years, that's given, that stepped up when no one else could, and he did, and I saw it from afar, right? And heard about it. My mom still lives here. She's 85. She wanted to come, but she wasn't feeling well, so. Why take someone like that, someone that's respected, not only at Tiffin City Schools, but in Tiffin, Ohio, in Clinton, out in Clinton Township? Why? Why take that person? Why not offer him this chief of staff position? Are you kidding me? I don't understand. You know? We're giving multiple step increases to other people? And we're getting rid of the one guy that's been here through thick and thin? Doesn't add up. I'm not a math major either, but it doesn't add up. The fact is, it isn't. It isn't financial, not this one. It's personal. Listen, I hope you all begin right now, tonight, to earn that trust back, because you've got some stuff coming up that needs voted on. And it's now to earn that trust back. And I do, I do, I think you will. Think you're going to earn it back. You know why? Because one of the most highest integrity people that I know was my coach. And Coach Kizbeth, I trust you. I trust you. All right? Thanks again for your time and consideration, as always, go Blue.
Lee Alvarado, 142 North Washington Street. Red traditionally means passion and desire, and oftentimes courage. There is a plethora of red in this room tonight, and it is a full house. I wanted to address the board and discuss the significance of red for education. When we wear red, we are standing together and making our voices heard in a demonstration of our unity. Recently, educators across the country have had to fight for our students, uphold our values, and advocate for change. For me, my red represents the need that students must always be the forefront of all decisions, especially as we are looking at changes to our district. Red for Ed is a movement. It is a movement of educators who will put everything on the line to fight for the public education our students and community deserves. As you can see, we want to be here for our students and our community. The love for our district runs deep in this community, and we must be prudent and thoughtful with a clear direction.
I'm Charlotte Lininger, 8519 West Township Road, 96 New Riggles, Ohio, but I do teach at Noble. All right. First, I'd like to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to speak. I know that many other teachers have comments that they'd like to make, but may be afraid of the retaliation that they may experience in years to come. I'm a small representation of those teachers. I feel that I have been highly respected teacher in the district for the last 20 years. I am known for my unwavering advocacy for my students and parents, students and parents that often are unable to speak for themselves and advocate for their special education needs. I feel that if I do not speak now, then my silence may be a misrepresentation of my acceptance of the current situation. I want it to be publicly known that Mr. Bowes has been a constant in this district and has been a source of comfort and leadership, integrity, and strength the last several years. No matter the turmoil, the rumors, the empty promises that have surrounded our district in the last 10 years, it was Mr. Bowes alongside of a former administrator that made it a point to get out and to be visible in the buildings. Just seeing them in our buildings brought a sense of calm and security during the turmoil. These two people let us know that TCS would emerge stronger and that we needed to have trust in each other and continue to work as a team toward our district goals. When starting in this district nearly 20 years ago, TCS was a lighthouse for many area schools. Our class sizes were larger, and our school system was bringing in several open enrolled students. Parents and students wanted to tend TCS because of the vast opportunities that were offered here. At some point, that trend changed, and we started to downward spiral. Trust from the community started to decrease, and what seemed to be a constant flow of superintendents and special education supervisors began. I realize that our current financial situation may not be completely the result of our current superintendent's, that he hasn't had a direct hand in it. However, the fact that we have had to pay out salaries for administration that have been let go, bought land that sets empty, and most recently moved administration around to cover different jobs, not the jobs that they were originally hired for, and in turn have had to pay others to pick up their duties. All of this has led to the financial struggles and lack of confidence and trust in Tiffin City School community and amongst many teachers. Positions have been eliminated, shifted, and created, leaving heads spinning and teachers needing flow charts to understand whom to direct questions. As a result of the many changes and restructuring, we have already lost one main cheerleader in line in this district to another school system. It would be detrimental for the staff morale to remove Mr. Bowes from his current position. He is the true leader that many teachers look toward for guidance, security, stability, and honesty. In addition, Mr. Bowes has been the individual that has been asked on several occasions to be the interim superintendent. Under his leadership, he has helped pull this district through some of its darkest days. One of the most important was the pandemic. He also has stepped into our leadership in the midst of many publicity nightmares that have followed our district. It is imperative to staff morale, trust-building, staff security, and most importantly, moving Tiffin City Schools forward, that Mr. Bowes be kept in his lead, key leadership role that allows him to positively impact our district and not just a single building. I know that as a board of education, you have many important decisions that you have to make, but this might be the most important decision for our Tiffin City School family.
Hi, I'm Wendy Borbulin, 2 Undergrowth Street, Tiffin. I just want to address the board. As a parent, I've had 11 kids go through the school. As a parent, I've had 11 kids go through the school. Mr. Bose has been one of the biggest staple with helping me with my kids. One of my kids has succeeded and has a master's degree, and he is working for the University of Michigan. As much as I don't like to see all the red here today, it is a hard color for me to see, but I'm in supportive of it right now. We can't lose him as our superintendent, nor the teaching staff. This teaching staff for 11 of my kids have been one of the best teaching staff, and just to cut them, to cut them, is heartbreaking, especially when we go out and we buy land that is unbillable, and we sit in here and we say these kids need the best of the best. When I graduated from Clumby and in 1990, when I went to school with Bob, we didn't have the best of the best. Our tornado systems was sitting under a desk with a book over our heads. We don't need the best of the best. We need these people. They're the ones who are going to teach our kids. The building isn't teaching our kids. The teachers are. And to cut these teachers, I just can't see it. Why would we want to bring our kids to Tiffin City Schools? Or why would people want to enroll if we're losing some of the best staff that we could have and the superintendent? And that's all I have to say.
My name is Donald Swartz. I live at 142 Elmer Street. Now, was an 18-year, 18-year public school employee. I got the honor to work under Mr. Bose. And just as everybody said, Mr. Bose has been tops in this school. So I don't know if this is between you, Mr. Richards, and Ben, and Mr. Bose, or if the board approved it, but I think tonight I would like to see you all man up and give Mr. Bose a sincere apology. That's all I have to say.
I don't think we're at the 30 minutes left, sorry, 30 minutes time yet. So if anybody else wishes to speak, we do have some time. Okay, I don't see anybody. Mr. Richards, do you see anybody stepping up? Okay, just want to make sure I don't miss anyone. All right. All right, so we will conclude item number seven. Thank you, everyone. I've been up to that podium myself in the past, and I know it's not easy, so we do appreciate your feedback. We'll move on to item number eight, the consent agenda. Read through the titles briefly. We have approval of minutes. We've got three, three meetings to approve the minutes for. I think the, just for clarification, the item up on the projector is a little newer than the one we all have printed. So I'm reading item number eight. They are, item number seven's up there. I apologize for that. We have, sorry, the approval of the minutes, treasurer's report, committee report, resignations, long-term leave of absence, administrative employment, employment of professional staff, employment of support staff, donations and grants, and that is everything. Going to get a motion to accept.
I'll move.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
That's the entire consent agenda, correct?
That is correct.
I would move to pull out item 7.6. Accept it?
Sorry, motion to approve.
Okay. But it has to be unanimous for it to be a consent agenda.
That's correct. So the question posed was, can we pull individual line items out of here? It is all of eight or none of eight? So we can pull an individual line item out of here?
I did get the job description this morning, so. Yeah, or I would rather do the executive discussion and just be able to, because I have questions about that job description.
Okay, so Mr. Perez, you would like to... Sorry, Mr. Cook, I didn't hear what you said.
I would.
So you're proposing to pull 8.6 out?
Right. Right.
Pull it out or do you want to talk about it?
Talk about it.
7.6.
Sorry, I apologize, 7.6. Okay, so I've never seen us pull individual items out of the consent agenda, so you're going to have to walk me through this one. Okay. So do we need a motion to vote down the motion? So we need a call? Yeah, okay.
What are we voting down?
Okay, so we have an amendment to move to executive session? Kind of Mr. Perez moving, can I get a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So we are going to adjourn to executive session for a period of time. We will be back for action and the continuation of the remainder of the agenda.
Returning from executive session to clarify the agenda. Sorry, so the motion for the consent agenda is still on the table to clarify the item. Again, I'm reading eight point six at seven point six. Could we scroll to that real quick? For the administrative employment. So it's for Jerry Nadeau, Chief Academic Officer, Classification One, Step Seven, Two Thousand Eight One, Two Thousand Four through seven thirty-one, Two Thousand Seven. I wanted to clarify that that is not a new position for him. That was the position of Chief Academic Officer was board approved in going into this school year. So it is not a new position. We do have that job description and we have approved it. And he remains at the same class and step that he currently is with a three-year renewal contract. His current contract ends on seven thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four. So he wanted to clarify that information.
And take it, take it further for some of you older people, none of you as old as me, but that's okay. Deb Schmidt was in this position. Merrill Hill was in this position. And Nick, I can't remember Nick's last name. Yeah, that's, that's the special ed part that we're talking about.
I do have one more item. So we did, this is going to, I'm not going to dialogue here. We did take action regarding Mr. Bose. And there was some information that was in the advertiser Tribune. So Mr. Richards and I both made comments to the advertiser. And unfortunately, that was prior to information being sent out to the staff regarding the action that had been taken. So we got the timing of that communication wrong. So I just wanted to apologize to the teachers and staff and Mr. Bose. So we got that wrong. We will get that right in the future. I know I've been critical of boards in the past of communication and, and I got that one wrong. So I just wanted to apologize for that.
Hey, roll call. Mrs. Steffi.
Dr. McBride.
Yes.
Prez.
Yes.
Kizbeth.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
All right, moving on to number nine, action items. We have item nine point one. Eight point one action items. So eight, eight point one, we have some, let me get to it here. We have the approved local five seventy collective bargaining agreement. Mr. Richards?
I'm actually going to turn that over to Mr. Cook for both eight point one and kind of eight point two.
Okay, these are our aid and food service contract that were negotiated last summer. I thought it was important, I think, I don't know, August when I got here, we approved some changes to these contracts. We finally worked with the union. We have complete contracts. Given it's almost March, my office needs to get moving on things. I wanted to get these contracts in front, in front of the board for approval. There are a couple of action items we're going to be bringing forward hopefully next month if legal counsel can get them done. We have some MOUs that we've sat down with OPEC and our union representation. They've been great to work with. We have some things that just need to get cleaned up. In the interest of time, I thought we got to move. Let's get these things approved so that my office can continue to pay. And then we're going to mop up any of the quote unquote housekeeping items between those contracts and where we should be on other items. So both of these are on here tonight for your consideration.
Any discussion?
These are the ones from the summer.
Yes, I don't, I'm assuming July. I don't know when they were negotiated. I was not here yet, but we're cleaning them up. We're moving. It's taken some time to get through. There were just some language items we had to navigate through, some discrepancies, some things were typed up, some things were agreed to that maybe weren't, I don't know. But we've cleaned them up. I'm at the point, I feel comfortable with them, the things we've identified that need changed. I'm not going to let paralyze this. We need to move that forward and then we're going to correct those. We've spoken with the union. They're in agreement with those items and we're going to move that forward and get everything cleaned up. Going forward, I've spoken with Mr. Richards. We won't have this problem again. Superintendent Treasurer will be at the table. We'll have district legal counsel there as well, two board members, and then of course, any other representatives that need to be. So we'll just, we'll make sure that process is a little refined as we go forward.
Do we have an ink sheet?
Not that I'm aware of. No, there's, OPEC, I believe is unionizing with bus drivers and secretaries. I worked with Chris, Jerry was there, we had union representation. We're not going to contest that. I believe it was like ninety-nine percent, maybe a hundred. They're, they're going to do it. There's no need to fight it. Spend the money on that. Don't believe so. Teachers are coming up. I don't remember the timing on that one. I wasn't here for that one. But nope, these are the last two that needed to be approved. They just have not been approved yet as full contracts.
Okay, any additional discussion? Okay, none. Mr. Cook?
Need a motion.
We do. Motion to approve.
That's okay.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, now any additional discussion? No, all right. Mr. Cook?
Mr. Kizbeth.
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mrs. Steffi?
Yes.
Mr. Prez?
Yes.
Yes.
Williams, thank you.
Okay, item eight point two, we have a similar one here, approved local five seven one collective bargaining agreement. I do believe we have a correction to make here, though. I think the date on this one should be July first, not August first. Is that correct?
Kelly, I believe we looked at this and that date's correct, is it not? It rolled. We believe that's correct. Should that need changed? We'll clean that up in an MOU, but we look back on that. It perplexed both of us and it, it aligns with what we're seeing.
Okay. Okay.
Potted our attention as well.
Okay, and you had a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Moving forward, we have a process in place that we're not retroactively doing this.
I do, yes. I want to avoid this at all cost. I've never seen it before.
Any other discussion? All right, Mr. Cook.
Mrs. Steffi. Mr. Prez.
Yes.
Dr. McBride.
Yes.
Mr. Kizbeth.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes. Okay, item eight point three, approving the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six district calendar and a correction to the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five district calendar. Any motion?
So moved.
Second.
So this is a calendar that is the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar follows the same philosophy that we used with the calendar committee for the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar. We just bumped everything forward an additional year. There's actually no date change on the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar. We just wanted to clarify the dates that were given of the number of days within each semester that those changed. We, we probably wouldn't even have to actually board approve that one, but just in the name of transparency, we wanted to make sure we went kind of above and beyond for that. And yet again, as we had a whole big, huge calendar committee, and I appreciate the work that they all did. We all looked at those numbers a gazillion times and lo and behold, it was another member that, it was a teacher that said, hey, did you guys actually count the right number of days? So I appreciate the fact checking that went in with that as well. So we just wanted to kind of tie that up and make that a little bit more clean.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Cook?
Dr. McBride. Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Mrs. Steffi? Mr. Prez?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes. Item eight point four, approve the Meta Solutions Master Services Agreement. I think we're asking Mr. Cook for a little explanation on this one.
Sure. It is not a new contract. Every district in the state of Ohio, with the exception of Olentangie, Columbus City, they're considered.
Can I stop really fast? We should have a motion too.
Yeah.
I make the motion that we approve the Meta Solutions Master Service Agreement as attached to the agenda.
Can I give you a second?
So this is our ITC contract. Every district in the state of Ohio, with the exception of the big ones, Columbus City, Cleveland Public, Cincinnati, they're attached to an ITC. It used to be called an ASITE. That's an information technology center. They provide our fiscal support. They provide, provide our student services support, which is Dazzle, Power School, EMIS support. They do offer a myriad of services outside of the scope of those, but predominantly for fiscal support as well as student services, EMIS, and Dazzle. There've been some discussions internally and processes, procedures. I personally don't think we get the bang for our buck. I've been with Meta, I've been with numerous ITCs over the years. They're the largest in the state. They're the eight hundred pound gorilla. They have the answers. When we need help and call, I'm confident they're going to be able to provide us those. So again, this is nothing new. We're with NOASK over in Lima right now. We did our homework on this. I did include Jerry because it includes some special ed aspects as well. Both of us, it was a clear cut once we met with NOASK where we really truly needed to be. But again, reiterate, not a new contract, just a different provider.
Not a new contract, something we have to have, just a different.
Yes, correct. Yes.
But can you, it's kind of hard to do, but can you explain what they actually do? Because I think we got an email that this is like something, it's not that. And then second of all, I think some people might get worried because they see the meta name. It's not tied to, it's a consortium, correct?
Yeah, it's a consortium. It has nothing to do with Facebook. I've actually had that question myself. So I get it. It's kind of comical. Let's think in my office, we use state software, which is designed by the state of Ohio. We used to be on a thirty-year-old implementation, jokingly, but half serious say only the state of Ohio could take an old software program and make it worse when they rebuild it. If we screw something up in our office and we can't fix it, there's something in that system that's boogered up. We have just pooched it royally. We call them for help. How do we fix this in the system? Because again, we're processing. I have a wonderful fiscal team, but they're not programmers. They don't know how this stuff works. So they're who we rely on when everything hits the fan. They train us on calendar year end, quarter year end, changes to the IRS they make, inputs in our system, updates that the state makes. They do the same thing for Tammy and Kate with respect to Dazzle. They provide assistance. One of the things we're going through right now is we're doing a review of, I guess there's like three thousand errors and clever. We've got a committee that's kind of working through that. We work with the ITC to help us resolve those issues. If there was ever a time where the district wanted to perhaps, and I'm not saying we are, we are not, transition to Power School at some juncture, the ITC would help support that transition. Meta is extremely good at that. So that would open up a whole new avenue should that decision be made down the road. We've not had that discussion that I'm aware of at this point, but that avenue would be available. So they're, they're more or less, think of it like tech support. When we need help because the system isn't cooperating, something's gone wrong, that's who we call to help resolve our issues.
But I think to clarify, they're not coming in and working on our internet or wifi. This is software issues that are.
No, they can't. They can. They have a division that'll do that. This is merely, that's a separate, that'll go through E-rate. We post a four seventy. We have funds available for that. They would, I'm sure, be in the mix. We have one posted now to help manage our network. Obviously, we have some discussions on managed versus owning. I'm not going to get in the weeds on that, but they are big enough, they could.
But this isn't it.
No, sir.
Twenty, I think twenty dollars and twenty-five cents per.
No, sir, that's for core services only, fiscal, EMIS, et cetera, not any networking.
Mr. Prez, let me give you from kind of the non-fiscal side. As former high school principal, we have to build a master schedule. And Mr. Kizbeth, you've probably had to build a master schedule as well. Not the easiest thing in the world to be able to do. This ITC or Meta would be able to provide support to us as we go through the process of scheduling of what, how do we make sure we put kids into the courses that they sign up for? What are ways that we can streamline that process? How does that work within Dazzle? I used Dazzle to work with scheduling and I will tell you, I don't know if Mrs. Musgrave is still here. It's not awesome for scheduling. So I think making sure that we work with a site that, a provider that can assist us with all of those, that's probably one of the more teacher feeling ones. But for example, when we want, when we have, if we make changes to our grade book or anything of that nature, that goes through these people that can provide the customer support for us. If we were ever to change our grade card format or anything else like that, like those are all things that would go through this same support endeavor.
Any more questions or discussion? Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Prez?
Mrs. Steffi? Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes. All right, moving on to number eight point five, adopt the OHSA membership resolution. The motion.
So moved.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Jerry? Dr. McBride in a second.
If we want our students to still participate in extracurricular in tournaments, we have to be a member of OHSA. It's pretty straightforward on this one.
This is a standard thing we.
This is something that we do every year for our kids to be able to make sure they can still participate in postseason tournaments.
Any questions or discussion? Mr. Cook?
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mrs. Steffi?
Yes.
Mr. Prez?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes. All right, item eight point six, accept the fiscal year twenty-five tax rates. Any motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Cook?
Thanks.
Yeah.
These rates are established by the county budget commission based on our levies, where we're at on valuations, et cetera, to arrive at poof, this magic number that they collect at. We don't have any say in the matter. They set those, we accept them. I ship it back to them.
Any questions or discussion? And you sent out the tax rates previously, so we've had a chance to review that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I don't see any questions or discussion. So Mr. Cook?
Yes, Mrs. Steffi? Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Prez?
Yes.
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes. Item eight point seven, a resolution authorizing the disposal of real property owned by the board. A motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. This is, I've, I've been approached by an entity that would be potentially interested in acquiring some of the farthest parcels on Lincoln, the farthest parcels away from the building. So this would, at this resolution, all it does for us is says that we are willing to consider divesting ourselves from those parcels. The first thing that we would have to do is we have to offer that up to any local charter school in the area. So I'll reach out to Bridges if we were to pass this resolution and then we can go up for potential auction or sale of that at, at a later point in time. This is just the first step of what we would have to do to look at divesting ourselves of that. So far, in the, in the superintendent advisory committee, that land is not part of a master plan for our district. I'm not certain if there's going to be an entity that really wants it. They've expressed some interest, so we have a little bit of time to play with it. There is nothing on this agreement that authorizes us to do anything. We are not actually selling that land. We're not even saying it's up for auction. We're saying we're willing to go through the process to see what it is that we can explore moving forward. So there's nothing in this resolution that actually binds us to anything other than to look at exploring device, divesting ourselves from that property, those parcels.
And you've recently provided us all with the, the overhead maps around the other side of all the, the property we own. So I think is, everybody here is familiar, I hope, with, with the parcels we're discussing.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments?
Just unfollowing on that, and you can cut me off if you think it's inappropriate, but in line with that, I think at a previous meeting, we also discussed disposing of the, the property on the south end of town. What's your timeline on that or?
I think that's something that, I think having a timeline on that is going to be something that is worthy of a conversation here in the very near future.
And unrelated to the current resolution.
Patience.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, Mr. Cook?
Mr. Prez? Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mrs. Steffi? Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes. Okay, item eight point eight, approve a real estate purchase agreement. Motion to approve.
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
All right.
This was something that's been part of the strategic kind of initiative for the district. It's been stated apparently for a number of boards of education that eventually we'd like to potentially, eventually take possession of the properties on the block that the high school currently sits on. This is one, I, I, I've never met him. I guess he goes by Chief is actually his, his name, which is apparently because he's a disc jockey. I thought maybe he'd been fire chief or police chief. So Mr. DeVore and his staff have been working with Mr. Eisen on a purchase for that. We have what we believe is a fair market value for that home. And yet again, it's, it's kind of a strategic initiative. This money all comes from PI funds. This does not come from the general fund. When we make purchases like this, going back to those two funds that we talked about earlier, this comes from PI. So I believe it's probably not in a, in a perfect world, timing wise, it might be nice if we could do it later, but this was an opportunity that came along now and an opportunity to try to take advantage of something that has been a allegedly a long stated goal for the district for some time.
I think one of the, the important parts about this one is we are, the, the previous item, item eight point seven, right, we are moving on not longer, no longer being owners of property that is not strategically important to the district and, and almost trading for property that is strategically important for the district, right? We recently purchased the house next to the administration building. So this is sort of completes that strategic purchase of items on that block.
Correct.
Again, taking revenue from things that are not strategically important to the district at this time and, and sort of trading them for things that are.
For example, the West Junior High that we recently sold that land, because that wasn't, to your point, that wasn't a strategic benefit for our district right now. So yes, taking the proceeds from that along with those about ten parcels down at the, there we go, at the end of Charlotte, that are right along the river. So taking those properties and using the funds that we've gained from those to try to be strategic about the properties that we do own.
Any additional questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Cook?
Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mrs. Steffi? Mr. Prez?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes. Item eight point nine, approval of a sewer easement. Motion to approve?
Second.
So this is an easement and there we have some people from the city as well, from the law office there that have been working on this. We currently have a person that lives right by our fort, that they are in need of sewer help. They have to access that by going through the property that the fort is on. This is no cost to the district. This is to help our neighbor, one of our neighbors to be able to have access to running water and sewer again. And yet again, there is zero cost to the district. I'm fairly positive of that. And I'll look back at Mr. Fowler just to, for confirmation of that. So yet again, I think this is one of those times where yet again, the district can just be just be a good neighbor to make certain that we can get this provided for the people at no cost to Tiffin City Schools, but to make sure one of our neighbors is taken care of.
Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Cook?
Yes, Mrs. Steffi? Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Perez? Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, and item 8.10, approve the Arcadia Infrastructure Master Marketing Agreement. Any motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you.
Thanks. I was approached by Arcadia Infrastructure. They have, their primary business is marketing cell towers. They approached myself, that I believe there's six sites in the district they're potentially interested in. I don't know the wireless companies, but they've reached out because of some of the signal strength issues that are in the Tiffin area. This authorizes us, there's no cost to the district. They've worked with Brick and Eckler to engage Arcadia to go out and seek, I guess, true up that interest to make sure these companies are in fact, and if they are, they would then come back to us with agreements for those selected sites to potentially place a cell tower there. They would work with the city, all the zoning, all of that intricate nitty-gritty. It would be an additional revenue source for us. They sent some projections. I don't put a lot of faith in that stuff, but I think it was over a 20-year period, if the towers are half-occupied, it was around a half a million dollars of additional revenue to the district. So, it's an interesting look to see what's out there, shake the tree a little bit, see if anything comes to fruition, bring it back to the board then, should that develop. But this is just kind of that initial step to engage with them.
They're just engaging in discussions, not actually digging for any polls.
No checks are coming my way yet.
All right. Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Cook?
Dr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Perez?
Yes.
Mrs. Steffi? Mr. Kizbeth?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item number nine, some board discussion. I do have one item, more of a comment than discussion. I see our leadership class instructors here today, so I wanted to make a comment. There's obviously a lot of red in the room, a level of unified support around a particular topic. I think that's a good lesson. When, when we don't see something that we like, or something that we agree with, right, we, we do have the power to do something, right? It's sort of, you know, leading from, from the pack as opposed to leading from the lead, right? But I think that's a good lesson, maybe to take back to some of the students, right? This is, this is what makes this forum actually good and powerful, right? It's part of the society that we get to live in, is we have the ability to do these things in a peaceful manner, right? And I think this is, this is something good for our students to see, you know? Obviously, sitting on this side of the table, we, we don't, you know, we like the comments, but it's uncomfortable being here, right? And it's uncomfortable giving the comments, right? Like I said, I've been on that side of the podium before. But I think this is a good lesson for our students. So, any, any of you who are here who have a chance to take this back, I think it's, it's something that we should celebrate sharing and not shy away from. So, that was, that was it.
If I may, I apologize for my attire today, but I was wearing my cheerleader stuff to support our cheerleaders this weekend. They're going to be in competition and have to be corrected. I think they said back-to-back champions, but they're not because they counted two and one, so it's actually three in a row, and I think people underestimate, again, I said it last year, the athletics, the commitment that they have to make to do it, and the skill that they have. And then, turning from that, this afternoon, I got to see all our athletes back on the field today. I was kind of surprised. It's track season, softball's out there, baseball's out there, and I think that always helps to remind, and I got to see the schools last week, why we do what we do. And this fiscal piece has been here forever, since I've been here, and I think everyone has to understand that, I think we've made a commitment, I know two board members at least resigned knowing what was coming, and I think we do it because I think there is, we understand there's hope for this district, and the strength that you show here, I think it just empowers us to go out there to make sure that this works, because we value and I think we treasure our schools, just, you guys are in there every day, so I'm not going to say more than you, because you see our kids every single day and fight for our kids, but some of us are parents too and have our, going to deal with this, and the fact is, I think it makes us fight even harder. For the superintendent, though, I will say that the last several years have been a bit disorganized, to say the least, and that we've needed structure and order. And I will remind people that under the revised code, the superintendent is our chief operating or chief executive officer. So, that's not the board's job. We support you, but ultimately, he gets to assign and appoint staff and administrators where he deems best. That's his job. We can't do that, we don't review everything, and, but we are aware of what's happening. The other part of it, though, is the board does, we appoint or approve administrators. That's one thing we do that are necessary for the district. So, I think that I've heard multiple times, and I actually heard them today again, it's, I think we expect that going forward, and I know there were issues, one is, we are, I would say for myself, we are looking at any extensions on contracts. That's, that's going to be a serious matter. We have to be consistent all the way through, but two is, we need to know what everyone's roles are, and we need to know why those administrators are necessary going forward. I think that should have been done in the past. I think it was, but that has to be explained to us, because we do have purview over that. We don't have it over direct staff and stuff like that. We do have some jurisdiction there. So, in those regards, that's, I think, what we, what I expect. But again, it, as Mr. Cook said, there is hope in there somewhere, if we just look at it, and the numbers are bad, but if we, we can find a solution to it. So, that's all I would say.
I would like to address the Robert Bowes situation. I've worked with many of you. I don't know if Brian still or not. I coached him. I wrote this on January 30th because I actually told Bob Bowes, there's only two people that feel worse about this than me, and that's Bob and Hope. So, I just want to read this. "As a cost-saving move for Tiffin City Schools, Superintendent Ben Richards has made the decision to move Bob Bowes from his assistant superintendent position to an elementary principal position, an opening that we currently have occupied by an interim principal. By doing this, the district saves the salary and benefits of a Tiffin City School District's administrative position. On a personal level, I am disappointed with this option and the decision based on my association and work with Bob Bowes over the many years, including in his position as middle school principal, when I served as an interim dean of students in his building, and in his position as assistant superintendent and interim superintendent over the past approximate 10 years. Bob Bowes has served this district well in difficult, trying times. For many of the past few years, starting with the administration of Gary Barber, it was perceived that we were over-administered in the central office. It is not my position or place to determine the truth of that perception. On a professional level, this move makes financial sense, especially with the fact that Bob Bowes has served as an elementary principal earlier in his career. With this move, we save the salary and benefits of an elementary principal. It is this, the financial end of the district, that we as board members need to be concerned. The school district is or soon will be in financial straits. Will be soon placed in operating levy on the ballot or an operating levy and a bond issue." I said I wrote this January 30th. "We haven't had any new money in 12 years. There are only 16 schools in the state of Ohio that pay less per pupil than Tiffin. We need new money. When asked, it is desired that the district comes through, but there are no guarantees. The timing of this or the idea of this move for Bob Bowes is not good, probably at any time, but the timing for the district is correct in these financial straits. We are going to need to hire an elementary principal to begin the 24-25 school year. The potential levy doesn't go on the ballot until November, after the start of the school year. If the levy fails, then we have the potential for an administrative rift. Therefore, it seems appropriate to make this move now. Having said that, I personally and professionally do not want to lose Bob Bowes due to finances. Bob Bowes is too important to our district. Bob Bowes has served our district in difficult times, and he has served it well. He has been a hero, a champion for this district. With this transition, though difficult, Bob Bowes, I hope, will continue to be a champion for the district. Thank you."
If I can add something, or did you want to go, Heidi?
Yeah, mine will be very brief.
Okay.
Just to address, I guess, a lot of you stated that there isn't a plan, or we, you know, we need to make sure that we have a plan going forward, and I would just ask that you, a lot of these problems, financial, you know, six superintendents in seven years, a lot of these problems have been well in the making, and I would like, I think I can speak for us, that you would give us some time and some grace to work on the many issues that we have. We are working diligently, and we are working on a plan. So, but, but we do need, I guess, the time and grace to be able to do that. And the land was brought up, that was one, I think that is something we are talking about. So, some of these things actually are being discussed, the land of the South, and, but we, we've got to keep working to get there.
President, I think in terms of where we're at, I did get comments, and some of them are easy solutions to our situation. I have to tell people there are no easy solutions. I think I said before, we're not going to cut ourselves out of this. And one of the things that kind of has reminded me of where we're kind of losing focus is, one of the things that always gets offered first, it's let's cut extra curriculums right away. That's everybody's answer to everything. And thanks to Mr. Cook, he did provide me with the numbers for that, and I think people will be shocked at the amount of support we get there. Basically, not including, I think, your supplemental contracts, it actually, I think, is currently positive in terms of the revenue it brings in, not including cross-country carnival. And so, I think people are just making easy things to say like that, not realizing that at that point, we would be hurting the students the most with that, and not realizing what is actually being spent or the value we're getting returned back. And so, that's why I just want to make sure any decisions we make forward are, again, as I think our president asked us to do, is focused on our students first. That's what we do first, so.
I could add to that, Mr. Perez. You know, we, I think in the last few weeks, we've all probably had a few, a few people reach out and describe some things that we may not have had visibility to in the, in the district, right? And I think one of those conversations, there are actually multiple of those, describing, you know, my two years on the board, we've, we've had to search for a superintendent, we've had to search for a treasurer, and now we're having to search for money somewhere, basically. So, so, you know, my, my assessment there was, no, as a board, we probably have definitely lost track of what's, what's happening at anything below that level. And, and some of that feedback, you know, thank you to anyone who reached out to a board member. If you don't reach out, we won't get that feedback, and that feedback is critical for us to, to make rounded decisions, right? And that's, and that's what we need. So, thank you to, to anyone who did reach out. It's much appreciated.
And to the, to the piece, we've heard it a few times. I heard it in the phone calls and in the emails, and then again tonight.